Let's start with the pludgery. Pludgery is to the right of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, underground, indivisible, omnipotient, just as with all. Call the roll?
Trusty Gray.
Here?
Here.
Here. Here. Let's change the order and do the appointments first. I've got a resolution to appoint Kevin Archibald to position of firefighter effective January 13th.
I'll move it.
Just a second. Call the roll?
Trusty Gray. Yes, trustee Solichuk?
Yes.
Trusty Tiberio?
Yes.
Trusty Rizzo?
Yes.
Mayor Gettrud?
Yes. And a resolution to appoint Alexander Luchinsky to position firefighter effective January 13th.
I'll make the motion.
Trusty Gray?
Yes.
Trusty Solichuk? Trusty Tiberio?
Yes.
Trusty Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes. A resolution to appoint Jared Topfowitz, a police officer, effective January 13th.
I'll motion.
I'll second that motion.
Trusty Gray?
Yes.
Trusty Solichuk?
Yes.
Trusty Tiberio?
Yes.
Trusty Rizzo?
Yes.
Okay, so I would welcome you guys to come up, I guess, one at a time. So, this is, the way we do it here is have the people come up, anybody who wants to take pictures, do a rough move around, you're not going to offend anybody, so. Kevin? Chief? Congratulations now. So, yeah, great.
Kevin Archibald.
I'm not that bad, but, hmm? Okay, so. Hi, Kevin Archibald.
Hi, Kevin Archibald.
You're solemn and square.
You're solemn and square.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Code of the Village of Scotia.
The Code of the Village of Scotia.
Faithfully discharge the duties of firefighter for Scotia Fire.
And faithfully discharge the duties of firefighter for Scotia Fire.
Congratulations. Alex?
Luchinsky.
I'm sorry, I should have buttoned up too. So, hi, Alex.
Hi, Alex Luchinsky.
You're solemn and square. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Code of the Village of Scotia.
The Code of the Village of Scotia.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of firefighter.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of firefighter in the Village of Scotia.
Hi, Jared.
Hi, Jared Topfowitz.
You're solemn and square.
You're solemn and square.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
Code of the Village of Scotia.
Code of the Village of Scotia.
I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
Duties of police officer.
The duties of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Good celebration. Privilege on the floor, does anybody wish to be here? Step up to the right here, okay?
My name is Sharon Trumpler, and I live at 218 Glen Avenue, and to just give you an idea of where that is, when I look out my back door, I see the drive-thru window of the CVS stores. I've lived on Glen Avenue for 40 years, so I've seen a lot of changes. I've seen the Teddy building go, I've seen Monty's delicatessen go. I used to work at Jemets before I retired two years ago, so my place of employment was relocated, et cetera, et cetera, you know the rest of it. I'm here primarily to speak about the possibility of a violation of state law by CVS in their construction process, as well as a possible local code violation of another property on Glen Avenue. But in my preparation for coming here tonight, two things came to mind that I hadn't planned on speaking about, one of which was brought to my attention because, obviously, I see a lot on my block. I consider us to be relatively in part of the heart of the business district. CVS was given permission by the planning board, of which those meetings I attended, almost all of them, mainly because I wanted to protect my property and that of two of my neighbors who have been extremely affected by the changes CVS has made. They were given permission, as I said, to have a sign on Glen Avenue at the entrance of their property. That has not happened yet, and originally, what we observed was the number of people who, regardless of the fact that that driveway has been there since the original CVS building, they don't know where the driveway is, so when they come upon it, when they're driving down Glen Avenue, they literally slam on their brakes, leaving the potential of an accident, a rear-end accident or whatever, so that they can make the turn into the CVS driveway. Most recently, we've become aware that when you're heading west on Glen Avenue, because you can see the back end of CVS's property, a number of people also think you can access that property by pulling into the back parking lot next door to my house. So they end up backing out onto Glen Avenue, rather than going around, because they don't necessarily know they can, drive through the parking lot. They back out onto Glen Avenue, and again, there's the potential for an accident. The other thing that came to mind just before I came here was reading on Facebook that the village is planning on possibly looking into the bicycle, rent-a-bicycle thing, like they have in Schenectady. I would strongly urge that if you pursue that, you also consider getting rid of those stones that are under a number of trees on Mohawk Avenue after the brickwork was pulled out. It's very dangerous for pedestrians, and those stones do end up in the road, so if a bicyclist is riding down Mohawk Avenue and they hit one of those stones and lose their balance, that driver, that bicycle driver, could be hit by a car. So I just want to bring that to your attention.
So, wait, Sharon, where are the stones?
All along Mohawk Avenue, primarily on the south side, but I believe there's a couple of spots where the brickwork was taken up and stones were put in. There's one right in front of First National Bank of Scotia, and there are several up and down the avenue. I believe there's another one not far from the fire station, but don't quote me on that. But if you walk up and down Mohawk Avenue, you're going to see them. And I'm just worried about somebody falling on those stones and being hurt, or, like I said, on a bicycle, they could lose their balance and get hit by a car. So, getting to my primary reason for being here, and I waited until January rather than coming last fall because all or most of you are new as members of the Board of Trustees. When I said that there was a possible violation of New York state law, it has to do with the fact that, I would guess, 99% of the people in the Village of Scotia are totally unaware that along the gray fence behind CVS and going down the driveway to Glen Avenue, there's as much as a four-foot difference in property levels. Now, some of the CVS fence has already been replaced because of cars slamming into it, and that part was directly behind 222 Glen Avenue. And I have some pictures here, you would like to see them. It's just a matter of time, in my opinion, before somebody loses control of their car and literally backs through that fence, because there's nothing to stop them from doing it. And more than likely, they're going to end up in the backyard of 222 Glen Avenue because there's approximately six parking spaces directly behind the building. The potential also is there for someone to end up in the backyard of Eric Seis, my neighbor, or my backyard, which, as I said, is right behind the pharmacy drive-thru, if someone were to lose control of their car.
Sharon, can I, sorry to interrupt, can I ask, that decorative stone, was that there?
That CVS put there, that's the retaining wall. That, it represents approximately a four-foot difference in ground level between CVS's property and my backyard, as well as my two neighbors. So the only thing to keep anyone from driving into our backyards is that fence. And I honestly feel that a guardrail should be put there. I've discussed it with one of the representatives of CVS, who passed my information along to a subordinate, and that was probably close to a year ago, but nothing has been done about it. And if somebody accidentally loses control of their car, they're going to end up in one of our backyards. So I really feel a guardrail is needed along the backs of our properties, as well as going down to Glen Avenue, because even though the height difference graduates by way of CVS's driveway, the potential is still there that from some of those parking spaces facing west, going up the driveway from Glen Avenue, the potential is still there that somebody could lose control of their car and end up crashing through the fence dividing CVS property from 222 Glen Avenue. It's just a matter of time. I did discuss that with a Mr. Larry Price, the project manager of DZI Construction Services, back in June of last year, and as you are probably well aware, nothing has changed. He actually passed that information along to somebody else. My second issue has to do with building codes and permits. The house at 209 Glen Avenue was purchased in September of 2017. In October of 2017, the front porch was ripped off, and ever since then, the roof has been supported by two-by-tens and whatever else the owner puts there. Currently, there isn't even a floor going to the front door, except for possibly two-by-tens, but there's no flat flooring, so I can't tell you if there's a legitimate building permit in the window there or not. I just find that to be a complete eyesore for Glen Avenue. There's a picture of that. The man who owns the property lives in New York City. I communicated with him over the year and a half or so that he's on the property, but nothing has really changed, and it's a safety hazard. In fact, hypodermic needles were found in the backyard because the first contractor that he hired, he and his crew enjoyed that sort of activity. I wouldn't walk back there with army boots on, to be honest with you, at this point in time. But I just can't imagine that there's not a building code violation going on there, or the fact that he is spending his time and money and efforts on the inside, and we've had to look at that for like a year and a half.
Doesn't look occupied, does it?
No, it's not, it's not, it's still under construction.
Who's the owner of that property?
I think I have it over here.
That's okay, Sharon, we can find it.
Sorry. I have to look through more of my notes in order to find, now I have his name and address. He lives in New York City, and he must do a lot of his communicating online to hire people, and it was his first crew of construction people that left a whole bunch of hypodermic needles in the backyard. So I'd like to see that address.
We can find it, that's good.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else?
I believe that's it.
Thank you.
I'd love your questions over here, fine.
As the police inspector, the law firm office.
Not by us, I'll ask him. Okay.
That's 209, I don't know if I specified.
Got that.
But that's 209 Glen.
Okay, item number seven. Do you want to explain this one, Maria?
This will allow online credit card payment for water and sewer bill. Hopefully effective February 1st.
Did I mention, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm collecting social security now, but there was a timeframe behind 209 Glen, there was a very large amount of hypodermic needles found in the backyard from the first contractor.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll be careful.
Thank you, unforgettable.
So we need a resolution to authorize a assignment agreement with them.
I'll make a motion. I'll second that.
I'll favor.
Aye.
I'll.
Okay, so this is the, authorize the mayor to sign the grant disbursement agreement with the dormitory authority for the Collins Lake Water Quality Stabilization.
Make a motion for that?
I'll second.
I'll favor.
Aye.
A resolution in connection with the Village of Scotia accepting lead agency status pursuant to state secret regulations related to Collins Lake Quality Stabilization Grant. So that's, just declares us being in the lead agency.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I'll favor.
Aye.
Number 10, is a resolution authorizing commitment to community development block grant income funds?
Is that the revolving loan fund? That revolving loan, I'm going to change it into this.
The revolving loan fund of the state is requesting a new bid. So this will commit the funds to the project.
Okay.
Handicap.
Just want to make sure. I'll make a motion.
I'll second that motion.
I'll favor.
Aye.
I'll.
And the next one we need to table, after we discussed the commitment of the funds, when we talked to someone in the state, we need to now do an environmental review. So, we can't solicit bids until we complete our environmental review.
Okay.
Is review being done now?
We will start.
Clearly, lead agency was.
Because I know we're on a clock with the state, so I want to make sure.
The most important was the commitment of funds by March 31st, and this resolution will allow.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, so can I have a motion to table?
I'll make the motion.
Number 11?
One second.
I'll favor.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, mayor's comments to the board. I got three things to report, nothing very earth-shattering. The Cumberland Farms opened last week, you probably all know. We're having a debate with them right now over the brightness of the lights. They agreed to have them at 4,000 K, and we measured them more like 6,000, so. They have a temporary CO, and Louis is going to talk to them about changing them. If we don't, they won't give them the permanent CO. I have a meeting tomorrow with Ray Gillan to talk about, just find out if there's anything they can do to help Scotia. I had a meeting yesterday with the CBTA people about the bike share program. Sharon alluded to, I don't know how it got there so fast, but.
It's on Facebook.
What?
It's on Facebook.
But how, where did it come from?
The article that's.
Didn't come from me.
Yes, in Scotia.
So anyway, they're, they're going to talk to me more about it. There's a question of the cost of it, and I doubt we have much budget for that, but the bikes are relatively, surprisingly expensive. We talked about, what they told me before, I wrote them a letter when I was a private citizen, asking if they could put bikes in Scotia, and they said, "We're not going into new municipalities for now." And I said, "Well, we don't want you to treat it as a new municipality. CDT already treats us as a, you know, the bus line is an extension of the Schenectady route. Just stretch your map over and give us a couple of bike stations over here." So, yesterday, they talked about that, and they thought they could probably do that, but that was nice. I talked about putting one in the park, maybe close to the docks, but, and then people voted, could rent a bike and go around, and I talked about doing one in the green over here. They thought maybe those were too close together, but we'll see what happens. We're not there yet. That's, that's what I got. Correspondence lays on special committee reports.
Well, we had our bid meeting moved for another meeting, so I'll have to report on that next month.
Joe?
I had no report this month.
George?
Nothing, as we've been discussing, still working on the communications consolidation, trying to bring that together, make it a little cheaper for the village. Didn't have a planning board meeting, and I still owe Mr. Marx back there a call, check-in, along with the historian, so I'll have more to say on those two.
Good. Heather?
I don't have anything to report.
Okay, I went to the fire department, we didn't do anything very substantive. Departmental reports. Anybody wish to accept them?
I'll make a motion to accept the department reports with thanks.
I'll second that, nice job cleaning up the hill next to my house. We're halfway done, we put it somewhere. They're going to make me get my act together. They need to do my hill.
Okay, out of the claims, can I have a motion to Mayor Bills?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Call the roll?
Trusty Gray? Trusty Solichuk?
Yes.
Trusty Tiberio?
Yes.
Trusty Rizzo?
Yes.
Mayor Gettrud?
Yes. Okay, motion to approve the minutes of the November 14th meeting?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I'll favor?
Aye.
I guess, yeah, you guys can't really vote on that. Okay, motion to approve the minutes of the December 12th meeting?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I'll favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the minutes of the December 17th meeting?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I'll favor?
Aye.
Okay, does anybody have any new business?
I got a couple things to say. One thing, on our revolving grant fund loan, what are we doing with the people that owe us money on those loans? Any movement on payment, or we're just going to put a slapling on their properties that they may not own, or equipment they own?
I don't think we've talked about that, but we should.
Well, we.
Where do we see it?
We had hired an attorney some months back. One has been, I think, paid in full now. One has paid a substantial chunk and is now making monthly payments. One did not respond to the lawsuit and did not come forward to try to make payments, so that one, really the only thing to do is take a judgment and let it sit. Seems like there was, was there one more?
They're making.
Oh, they're making payments, yeah.
Okay, good.
And, yeah, so Maria gets periodic payments.
Okay, good thing. One other thing, and I spoke to you about it, water problem behind the Hometown Tavern and Brick with Clairs, and a lot of complaints about the waters, because the road has risen up a little bit when we repaked it, there's been a lot of water on properties, and I was wondering if there's something we can do with that. There's also a couple sinkholes down at the, right behind the Clairs, in front of the Clairs, which I don't think the Village is responsible for, so I don't know. I wish someone would recall their proper authorities and try to give them a good look at that, see if they get something going over there, but there is a sinkhole on the backside of the Clairs Park Lot on the road, and I've had the pictures of his property, which I showed you, that the water is really getting into his property, and that's not just his property, but a lot of other properties on that street.
Andrew, do you know anything about that?
The sinkhole was a gas dig for when they ran the sewer line.
Is that the front or the back?
The back.
Okay.
In front of the property, that would be, if it's along Saginaw Road, that would be DOT.
Okay, so anyway, you call DOT, have them look at it, because that road is getting to be real treacherous. If you go back there, there's big holes in the road, and it's terrible.
On Saginaw?
On Saginaw.
I'll do my best.
What are we going to do with the hole behind the Clairs? I don't know, it's about that big right now.
That's what I was telling you about, so that's a gas dig, and I'm in touch with National Grid about the permanent patch for that. So they had to dig that for when they ran the sewer line for.
Yeah, because we'll get reimbursed for whatever repairs are.
Yeah, we've already charged, billed them for the repairs. We billed them for six holes.
What about the water problems?
Nobody's mentioned any water problems back then. Nobody's mentioned water problems to me back then.
Well, I've talked to a couple residents in that area, the water, since the road has been raised, there have been water in their properties.
Well, then they should contact Public Works to ask me.
All right, I'll pass along.
I haven't had any.
Okay, I'll pass along.
The road is 1,000% better than.
Oh, yeah, I know, the road is.
The water's, the water's got to go somewhere.
All right, I'll have to get ahold of you then.
Okay.
All right, let's see, I think that's, oh, about the solar panel, what are we hearing on the solar panel contract?
I haven't heard anything more, have they?
You had, I think we had left it that you were going to ask a representative, some county, to come.
Sorry.
Not you, but the board.
Okay.
Prior to.
Okay, I'll do that.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, so we have this grant, EPG grant. Andrew, do you want to explain that?
Yeah, there was an email, I don't know, maybe before Christmas, that we got. We had a, as you know, we've got an ongoing engineering planning grant that's not associated with this, but we've been pretty successful in getting them, so. So this one, we applied for to do a study of the sanitary sewer force main under the river from our pump station to the city of Schenectady. Where that came from, I'll try to be brief, but our ongoing sanitary sewer pump station project through BFC has been dragging, I guess, and for some reason, DEC decided that they wanted the force main to be addressed in this project, even though that's not what we applied for. So to sort of appease them and move things along, we applied for one of these engineering planning grants to do a study of the force main, which was installed in the 70s. And we'll take their recommendation, or the recommendation from the report and apply for a second round of funding if we have to. There's also a very good chance that our study will show that the force main is fine. So that was, DEC liked that, and that kind of opened things up, and I think we're moving right along. I think we should be closing on our, our large project shortly, so that that can get moving. That's really the main goal of doing this. It's a good thing to do. It's something that should be done. You know, we need to know the condition of the force main, but the real reason was to make the people happy, so the people that were giving us the money happy, so that we could move forward.
We like people giving us money happy.
Yeah.
So we're talking about a $36,000 charge, 6,000 of which is ours, and 30 is theirs
to the grant.
And what we're being asked to do now is approve the application for the grant?
No, that's already, we've already accepted it. I believe we have to, we have to do the lead agency, right, Maria? Is that what?
No, no. For the PG, just to accept the proposal from Prime.
Oh, right, okay. So Doug Cole from Prime, who applied for the grant for us, submitted the proposal to do the work. The entire $36,000 will be paid to Prime to basically complete the engineering report. The last one we did of these was for the INI study in our sewer system. That was to Chazen, so very similar process. The nice thing about these grants is they pay half of it upfront and then half of it when it's done. So it's not like, it's not like a direct reimbursement.
So do you need something from us? Do you need to tell us where the money's coming from? Do we have to tell you where the money's coming? How do we do that?
No, so just the resolution to enter the contract.
Okay.
So 30,000 will be from the grant, and then 6,000 will be from where the sewer fund?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so can I have a motion for the
I'll make the motion. For the 30,000 from the grant, 6,000 for the sewer fund, to take care
Yeah.
For prime engineering proposal.
Okay.
One second.
I'll favor.
Aye.
Cool. Just, do we have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, guys.